I'd like to call a meeting in order for the Regular Common Council, City of Jasper. Could please have real call?
Presiding Officer Mayor Dean Van Der Heid.
Here.
Councilmember John Trader.
Here.
Councilmember Chad Leiken.
Present.
Councilmember Vince Helming.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Lorai.
Present.
Councilmember Kevin Manley.
Here.
Councilmember Nancy Ecklerly.
Here.
Councilmember Phil Mooney.
Present.
City Attorney Renee Khaber.
Here.
Clerk Treasurer Kirsten Keneese.
Present.
In order to have a quorum, a majority of the council members must be in attendance. All of the members are in attendance, which is a majority, therefore there is a quorum for this meeting.
Thank you, Kirsten. Would you take a moment for personal reflection? Thank you, and would all that are able please stand and join for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The minutes were sent out. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, I entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I have a motion from Kevin to approve.
Second.
A second from Vince. Any further discussion? All in favor, sitting by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. First thing on the agenda tonight is the Heart of Jasper and the Chamber of Commerce update. I don't know who's going to go first, but...
It's on the agenda first.
Okay.
Okay, good evening. Thank you for having me. Kate Schwank with Heart of Jasper. I'm just here to share some updates from 2024, and then I'll share a few projects and things that we're working on for 2025. So first off, just want to again thank the city on behalf of myself and the board for the financial support, with Josh Gunselman helps out a lot, other staff helps out a lot, and Street Department, Lot Department, they all support us, and everyone makes a difference in getting our work done. So just thank you to everyone within the city. We have four subcommittees all focused on a different mission within Heart of Jasper, so I'm just going to go through the four subcommittees on some of our projects and just share some highlights from the year. So within our Economic Vitality Committee, we oversee the facade grant program. So in 2024, we completed four facade projects. We installed 10 new signs. That was something we added this year in 2024 was to encourage new signage on the buildings. So totaling over $98,000 in building improvements. Round five, the facade grant program is open for 2025, and it closes next week, so it's already the fifth round of the facade program, which is kind of hard to believe. Since 2021, 23 facades have been improved using the facade grant dollars, and that's not including the buildings that completed work on their own without using facade grant funds. We started the new business incentive. This started in 2020 through the Genesis 12 project. In 2024, we had seven businesses open in the Heart of Jasper and five businesses relocated in, and two of those businesses received new business incentive money for a total of $23,000. And so to date, the Genesis 12 donor has given over $340,000 to 27 businesses in the Heart of Jasper. And we'll continue with the new business incentive in 2025. They've committed to $50,000 going forward, so we're looking to enhance that a little bit and add some other incentives to that versus just only financial incentives. So we're excited about that. And then we do host a tour of Open House of Vacant Spaces, so one of our focuses is filling the vacant spaces with arts, entertainment, and dining type businesses. So as of today, we have 10 spaces available for rent, and so we put those on social media and different projects that we have to highlight those, but we do one specific open house event throughout the year in partnership with DuBois County Entrepreneurs and Innovators. Under our Design Committee, this committee focuses on the aesthetics and the beautification of downtown. We did activate the second Astra Alley with some art installation, holly balls and lights. And so we have the three alleys activated, the Historic Alley by Sturm's, we will leave that one untouched. And then what we're working on in 2025 for the Piano Alley, we have a group of IU students from the Luddy School, and they are designing some sensors, and so as you would walk through the piano alley, music will play. So it'll have a different interactive element than just art, it'll have the sound and music piece to tie in with the piano alley. We host Love Your Community Cleanup Days at least twice a year, and so we partner with Jasper Park and Rec to help maintain the downtown through pulling weeds, cutting back the flowers, and then planting flowers in the spring. We get volunteers from Turn American Bank, from Kimball Electronics, and other Heart of Jasper members. And what Green Thumb said, they would have paid six full-time employees for at least eight hours, we can get done in about two and a half hours, and with all volunteer labor, which is, takes a lot of cost there. And they pay $50 an hour, so in case you need to, you know, looking for a job change there. We joined Avenue of Flags in 2024. We partnered with the merchants on this, so we have 16 flags from Central Green through Cabbie Chamber Office and then around the square. And we'll do that again in 2025, and hopefully as Main Street project is done, we can have flags go up and down Main Street too, if the location works out. And for 2025, we're working on a light-up downtown Jasper project, so there's perimeter lighting on the buildings on the square currently, all installed by the building owners. And one thing we're looking at is getting a quote to see if Heart of Jasper can install lighting that's consistent, so it all matches, and a bit more of a permanent attachment, and then syncing them with the courthouse lights. So as the courthouse lights would change colors for the holidays, then all the perimeter lighting on the buildings on the square would also change color. So we're waiting on a quote on that, but that is something that we would look to do in 2025. And then we have a Promotion Committee, and this is the one that oversees our events downtown. So another area focus is downtown activation, so with the courthouse square being done and having the four corners, we're really trying to activate those and focusing more on consistent events. So Movies on Main, those are free, movies at the Astra, we do those in the winter months. Music on Main is something we started last year and will continue again in 2025, so we have 22 Saturdays where there'll be live music on the square from 11 to 1:00. And so just something that's entertainment going on while people are downtown shopping and eating. And then Downtown Chowdown is back, and so that'll be at the Riverwalk Plaza, and one thing we're adding to this year is a bounce house every month, and really trying to focus on kids for that event. So the parking rec already has the ping pong tables and the cornhole board installed, so the location works out great. We're just going to have a bounce house along with the live music and the food trucks each month. And then the Shop and Sip is our monthly late-night shopping event. That's the third Wednesday of the month, there'll be eight of those in 2025. And live music there, the stores they open late, some of the stores will do special events in their stores during that event, so we'll continue with that in 2025. And then our Mingle on Main is our annual fundraiser that we host in April. In 2024, we sold out at 275 tickets and brought in $10,000 for that event, and so we'll continue doing that mingle-on-main type fundraiser each October. And then our Organization Committee, this is more of the one that looks at our budget and our volunteers, and so we host a community appreciation event. We did this at the Next Chapter a few weeks ago, really thanking our volunteers and our board and anyone that's a supporter of Heart of Jasper. We started off 2025 getting announced that we are nationally recognized or national accredited through the Main Street program, which is the highest level of accreditation a Main Street program can be by reaching certain levels that are asked of the Main Street. And we were supposed to have a Transformation Strategy Workshop this week to realign on our goals and do a strategic planning process, but with the weather, we had to reschedule. So that was, we were looking forward to that and seeing what the community feedback would have given. The last five years, we've been focused on arts, entertainment, and dining, and that was all driven from the strategic planning five years ago. So it'll be interesting to see from the focus groups in the survey if that still needs to be our focus, or if that will change. So I know that was a quick update. The handout I gave you is our annual report, that's also on our website, and if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them, or you're welcome to call me, and we can talk more in detail about anything, so I can appreciate all your support.
Good job, Kate.
Thank you.
Do a good, good job leading this organization, Kate. Main Street organization for the City of Jasper, five years ago, we started it, and it's been a real asset for us in activating the downtown, so, and Kate did it on a part-time basis, so.
Lot of help.
Lot of help from the board.
Other people, yeah.
Lot of volunteers. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thanks.
Thank you.
Nancy.
All right, thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. Every year, the City of Jasper, through the budgeting process, gives the chamber $4,000 and then also sponsors a table at our annual meeting, so part of that contract that we have with the city is a reporting back to tell you about what the chamber does. So I kind of outlined something here, our planning goals. There's a whole lot of things on this list, I'm just going to highlight some of them, but what we're wanting to do this year is really create the fear of missing out, or FOMO. So we have so much to offer through the chamber that we want everyone to be a part of this organization and all that we stand for and all that we work toward. So some of the things that we were doing during the year of 2025, we're going to be refreshing our New Welcome to Jasper book and revising it, adding some new photos and updating our chamber members that are listed in there, and also updating the information. We're also going to be focusing on the DuBois County Small Business Resource Center, and I'm going to go into that a little bit later, that's one of your handouts there. We do a weekly newsletter to our members, and we feel the importance of staying connected and keeping our members informed, and we really learned this a lot during COVID. I've said this before, but during COVID, I know some other chambers were like, oh man, we're going home, we're shutting the doors. Well, we never shut our doors one day. We felt very, felt it was very important to stay connected and keep our members informed. We also, we have a job opportunities, an email that's sent out about twice a month with local job opportunities that are available through many of our companies, and we offer that as a free service. This year, we're going to be introducing what we call a mystery shopper program to our members. So for example, let's say, Paul, in your business, you might have one of our volunteers come into your business, and we would have a form that they would fill out, kind of critiquing the business. What does the outside look like? What does the inside look like? How is the customer service, and those kind of things? When our volunteers return that to the chamber, we would not, we don't have anything more to do with it, we stick it in an envelope and we give it back to you, and you can decide then if you want to make those changes or not. So we're just starting to promote that among our members and feel like it will be very well-received. All of the businesses really could probably use a little bit of, you know, critiquing, I guess you might say. Also, we do a lot of ribbon cuttings, as you know, you all get notifications on the ribbon cuttings, and we have two scheduled already for this year, and we already did one, so as you, things are moving rapidly with that. We also help sponsor through some chambers in the southwestern Indiana area, a regional women's conference, and this will be the fifth time we've done this as a combined partnership, and that'll be on Friday, October 24th. Then we also, through the chamber, we help coordinate the Otona Bombs Days in Jasper, which is a big Christmas celebration, and do it kind of on behalf of the merchants in the downtown area, but really for the whole city. And then also, every year, we do a how-to-start-a-business seminar, and we also work very closely with the Indiana Small Business Development Center on succession planning and every other thing that they offer throughout the year. And then we host the Coffee with the Mayor, and that's being held four times during 2025, and we'll be scheduling the first one for sometime in the early part of March. And then we also hold Legislative Breakfast, and we do these, some chambers call them Third House Sessions. We invite our state legislators to come, speak to the constituents, whoever shows up, and really, we did one in January, there were so many questions, we couldn't even get through all the questions. So the next one will be held sometime in March, and it'll be about halfway through the session, or a little bit more than halfway through the session. So it should be very well-attended. And then we do what we call a timeout from business, it's a networking opportunities for businesses in the area to get together, connect, network, and really showcase the member business that is hosting that event. We also, we do the planning for the Old Jasper Day on May the 18th, and work with the Lions Club for their Strawberry Festival, and then promote that as a small community event. Women Empowering Women is a separate group, it's another membership organization, but it is designed for women in the working world, and we do four sessions of that throughout the year, really as a networking and also an information and educational session. And then for our annual meeting, or maybe another large event, depending on how we can get the speakers scheduled, we're looking at maybe bringing in Doug Bowles, he's the director of the Indianapolis Motor Speedway, some of you may have heard him speak before, but he's a very good speaker, and also something that we feel like local people would be interested in, especially with all the changes that have gone on that, at that facility through the past probably five years. We are working, we work with some other groups, DuBois Strong and some others, on the Entrepreneurs and Innovators Group, and that's to help people wanting to start a business and stay connected and help them through that process. And then I also serve on the Board of the Crane Regional Defense Group, I feel like that's very important, and just today I was named for another two-year term on that Board. It's a great way for our community to stay connected with Crane and everything and all the changes that are going on up in that area and in the Westgate Center also. We're doing something a little bit different, we did some interviews yesterday, Lisa is on our Board also, she represents the Heart of Jasper on our Board, so we're interviewing some of our Board members, and we'll be putting those out on Facebook and social media, so you can look for Lisa's interview to come out maybe in a couple of weeks. We promised we didn't make her laugh or anything during that interview. And then Patoka 2000 is another group that's been around for a long time, we take care of putting the flags and the plant, the flags and the planters on the bridge. We also do a tree dedication, a blessing of a tree every year on Arbor Day, and it's just really a small group of people that do a lot of volunteer work, and we keep the area down by the bridge kind of cleaned up and spruced up also. We do paper shredding, we've combined our efforts with the Kimball Resource Center now, and those guys, they are just crazy with the paper shredding, they do a whole lot more than what we've ever done in the past, but we combine with them, we help promote it, and they take in a lot of paper shredding, which would then keep that stuff out of the trash. We also have our annual meeting every fall, and we're looking forward to 2026 because that is the 250th anniversary of the United States, and the DuBois County Historical Society is taking the lead on that. So Gareak is forming a committee to help do whatever efforts that we're going to bring forth on that. We have a lot of partners with the chamber, we partner with the Rojack, Strassen Fest, Memorial Hospital, Heart of Jasper, DuBois Strong, just a whole lot of partners, and I have many of them listed at the bottom of the page. But I did want to focus a little bit on the DuBois County Small Business Resource Center. This is something, these services the chamber's been providing for many years, really, but the intention of it is to focus on small business and entrepreneurial development, and to foster true entrepreneurial spirit in our community, mostly working with companies that would have 100 employees or less. Usually when it's more than that, DuBois Strong will take care of those type of businesses, either recruiting or helping keep those type of businesses in business. But the important thing of this is to work with potential new businesses, existing struggling businesses, and then attract targeted businesses that could have success in this region. So we have our office, which we get a lot of people that walk in and say, I want to start a business, how can you help us do that? We also work with the Small Business Development Center, we're looking for some volunteer mentors, and also some professional services, for example, any attorneys, accountants, maybe marketing people that would be willing to give maybe up to 10 hours of kind of free or reduced rates that could help someone get started in their business without having to put out huge amounts of money to do that. And then maybe they would become a client of that particular professional service. Maybe working with some landlords for some affordable or reduced rate of office space, or business space. And then continuing to what we do well, provide workshops, seminars, we have a lot of free materials, we provide networking opportunities, and then after someone's gone through all of that, we love to cut the ribbon and make sure that they're going to be in business for many years to come in a successful way. Because as the mayor knows, and some of you others, we cut a lot of ribbons, and sometimes we feel they haven't gone through that process, and you just wonder sometimes how long they'll stay in business. But for the most part, they do well in our community, and we want them to even do better. But anyway, so starting a business is hard work, and it takes much determined dedication, and we want to provide as much help as we can to make sure that those succeed for many years to come. So that's my presentation tonight. Anyone have any questions?
Nancy, I just want to comment that I do think you provide a lot of excellent resources to business startups and those existing businesses that are thinking about down the road, you know, what's their handoff? What's their retirement plan? How are they going to keep their business alive and thrive in the future?
Right.
So appreciate you, all those things you bring to the table.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, and it's an update from Jenny. This is on the Help Program. If you remember, this is a Help Grant that we applied with the county together jointly on and received it, and Jenny is managing a big portion of this for us.
Good evening, Jenny Maude, Indiana 15 Regional Planning Commission. One year ago, your February meeting, I stood before you and talked about the Help Program that the county and the city had partnered on, and a year later, we, I am here today to give you some updates, and this program has been very well-received. In the year that, since we've started this, I've sent out over 300 applications for this program. I still get a call, an email, someone reaching out almost every week, hoping that there's still funding available. To date, we've received over 90 applications. We actually stopped after some consultation with the mayor and with the county. We stopped sending out new applications in April. Applications started going out February 28th, and so from February until April, we sent out applications and had already received more applications back by April than we would have had funding available. And just to see how well-received this was, applications, like I said, went out, the first ones went out February 28th. We had someone at our door at Indiana 15 at 7:00 on the 29th with an application completed, ready to go. He had stayed up all night, gotten everything ready, wanted to make sure that he had everything in so that he could be involved in the program. The program has taken a little longer to get going than we anticipated, however, it is just working through some new hurdles. OKRA, the Office of Community and Rural Affairs, has taken over this program from the Housing and Community Development Authority, so they were just learning the program, and so we were learning it along with them. But we have bid out several homes, we have homes that have new roofs at this time, we had some that actually got new roofs in December when weather was still really great. We have some that are waiting on weather to break and to get roofs on those again. We have homes that have received new HVAC systems, new water heaters. We have a resident who did without hot water for several months, waiting, and she told me, she said, I grew up without hot water, I can wait a little longer till this comes in. So she was very, very patient. She, she was very pleased though when she finally did get hot water back at her house and she could take a comfortable shower again. We have our next set of homes out for bid, information was sent out for those today, actually, on roof work. A lot of the homes throughout the county need roofs, and it is a big expense that homeowners struggle with paying, and it's something that just kind of gets put on the back burner time and time again. We have 12 homes out now for bid, we'll open those bids in January, work can be done then as soon as contractors feel that they have time and the weather is great, so hoping for a warmer spring. Then we'll have another 12 homes ready to go as soon as those bids are open and contracts are assigned again. We are bidding this in stages, and I've worked with homeowners on their priorities of what they would like completed in their home, since they've had a home inspection and a radon inspection. We do have some homes that will be receiving some radon mitigation through this program. The radon levels in their home were indicated to be higher than the allowable percentages, and so the mitigation will occur, and that will also come out of grant funds as well. The only hiccup that we have hit through this entire program is we need some contractors for electrical work and general, general contractors to do some ADA accessibility. So if in your talks with any local contractors, the bidding process is not hard, there are a couple forms that have to be filled out, there is a bid bond that is required to be turned in, but the bidding process is not hard. I will be very glad to walk anybody through the bidding process if they're interested at all, they can contact me, and I will be happy to work with them on that. But we do have some homes that are needing some electrical work, but have yet to have bids submitted for those homes. That's our only hiccup that we faced thus far in the OKRA occupied program. This program was a two-fold program, the other part of the funding is going to Tricap Head Start. Head Start is so excited to receive funding, they are able to purchase some things for a new sensory room at the facility here in Jasper, working on getting some things for other places throughout the building as well, through their office, so that they can, they can continue their mission. They are also looking to hire a new employee, but like everybody else that's looking to hire, there are a lot of folks looking to fill that. And the other, the flip side of that as well is that Molly Wukter has noted, this contract only goes until the end of the year, so that person would only be employed through, guaranteed employment through the end of the year. So that is, it's kind of a hindrance to some folks if they are looking. But otherwise, the program is going well, we are excited for spring to get things moving on homes and to see this program complete. It will be completed by the end of the year, all work will be completed, and we can have a lot of very happy homeowners. Any questions?
Jenny, is there enough money to fill the request of the 90 applications?
We have, we've allotted 15,000 per home, but there, most of the homes, we are getting the work done for well under that. So we've, we've gone through, we've inspected our initial 40 homes, they've had a home, a complete home inspection and a radon inspection. Once we've gone through and taken care of the work on those, if we need to start pulling in some more of the applicants that have received a, we've received your application, you are qualified, we need to hold until there's funding, we can go to those folks then. And I really want to thank the homeowners who have been patient through this process. I know a lot of them have held off on having heat, having hot water, as I noted, we've had roofs that are leaky, but they have been very patient and just excited to be able to participate in this program and to be able to stay in their homes. And you have been a model for other communities. The OOR program has opened up statewide for any community that is interested. The City of Tell City was granted an application back in December, and so they've looked at DuBois County and the City of Jasper's program, and have modeled a little bit of theirs after, and there's also other communities taking note, and this program will be taking off throughout our area. We already have, I think I have four communities who are ready to submit an application whenever they're able. Yes, sir.
You mentioned having problems getting electrical.
Yes.
I just pulled up our new Builders Association website, and there's maybe six or seven companies listed, I don't know if you want to try and reach out.
I will, I will reach out to them, yep.
Jenny, sustainability of the program, where do you see it in the future?
I can see that this program is going to be something that communities, like I've noted, have, have started applying for. If DuBois County or the City of Jasper wish, they can apply for this again in the future. The matching requirement is much less than what it was for the Help Program. The Help Program, you were required to match it with a million dollars, and you received a million dollars. The match for the now, the program now is a 10%, minimum match. Counties can receive up to $500,000 in funding, cities and towns can receive $350,000 in funding. So the requirement is much less than, than what you were required to put forth with Help.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the update. Next on the agenda is, we have it listed as a resolution with regard to Senate Bill 1, but before we go into that discussion, I'd like to introduce Matt Greller and Clint Lamb with AIM, and they're here to just kind of inform us, they represent the Indiana Municipalities, Accelerated Indiana Municipalities, and, and have been really in the middle of all this discussion at the State House and with others, other municipalities. So we've invited them to come down and just kind of share what they're seeing and, and what's what.
Sure. Well, thank you very much for allowing the AIM Traveling Salvation Show to come through your community. Before we get started on that, I, I do want to give my sincere heartfelt appreciation for your mayor. He does- your mayor. He does an outstanding job, serves on our Board of Directors. I'm a recovering public official, one year sober from the mayor's office in the city of Sullivan, where I served for three terms in the city of Sullivan, so I've worked with several of your mayors here. And January 1st of last year, when I decided not to seek a fourth term, I talked with Mr. Greller, and I got on board and started the Field Services Program with a cohort, Mayor Joe from Warsaw, Indiana, up north. And me being from Sullivan, I kind of unofficially take the south. Having said that, I travel. I travel to each community. I travel to all the counties. I visit with the mayors, the clerk treasures, which you have an outstanding clerk treasurer as well. She's very informative. She's always asking a lot of questions. She represents you very well here. And I got to give a shout out to Lisa. She does an amazing job, too, for your city. But just want to let you know sincerely that we're all in the same boat, right, with AIM? All of our municipalities, we're facing the same challenges, we're facing the same issues. But what sets you apart here in Jasper is you have amazing quality of services, you have dedicated political officials, and you truly are the admiration of a lot of southern Indiana, especially Hoosier communities. So I mean that sincerely, and I, you know, sometimes in public office, you don't always hear all the good things, right, going on in your community. But I want to tell you, of all the communities I go to, everybody wants to be like Jasper. So thank you for serving on the council and the positions that you do and making Jasper an outstanding community. And, which kind of leads into our discussion tonight, obviously, what it takes to be an outstanding community, right? There's always a new project. I've been to see Mayor Dean, I bug him. I've probably been here two or three different times this year. There's always something new. There's always something exciting. And things don't stay stale here in the city of Jasper. Your police department is a high level. Your fire department, when you compare it statistically with other communities, with your regional wellness and your aquatics and the library and the arts, it's just, it's amazing. I could stand here and brag on you all night long, but I'm not here to do that. You know what a great community you have. But like I said, it leads us, I'm here with Matt Greller tonight, our executive director. And our job at AIM, and I know several of you because I've seen you at different AIM events, so I don't have to go over exactly what Accelerate Indiana municipalities do. Other than me traveling to your communities, we also do provide a lot of education, and we advocate and we lobby on your behalf nonstop at the State House year-round. Obviously, it's been a spirited legislative session this year, and we understand you have a resolution here this evening that you guys are considering. And we just kind of wanted to provide you a little bit of an update from our end on your behalf, being your advocate of kind of what's going on at the State House.
Hi, everybody. Clint's never met a microphone he doesn't like. Pleasure to be here. I thought what I'd do is, very quickly, at a very high level, take you through where things stand currently as it relates to property taxes and the Indiana General Assembly. Obviously, we'd all like to see lower property taxes. You all know, though, that property taxes account for a good majority of your general fund budget. Vital services are paid for with property taxes. I don't have to tell you all that, you know how important it is. But as it stands today, you've heard a lot probably about Senate Bill 1. That is the vehicle or the bill that is moving that addresses the property taxes. It is a high priority bill, as you might imagine. It started out with the governor's proposal. I won't go into all those details, other than to say the fiscal impact of that bill, had it passed in its current form or in its introduced form, would have been dramatic for cities and towns statewide. We were talking close to a $2 billion reduction in property tax revenue around the state, upwards of 20%, 30% in a lot of communities from their existing property tax levels. So it's a very serious discussion. That bill has gone under a pretty transformational change in the Senate, and it's headed over to the House now. As it stands today, Senate Bill 1, the key components are as follows. The municipal growth quotient, the MLGQ, the amount your levy can increase every year, that number that's set by the state for the last couple of years, it's been fixed at 4%. This bill proposes a cap or a 0% increase for 2026, a 1% increase for 2027, and a 2% increase for 2028. So it has a compounding effect as you go forward over the next three years. That money that you otherwise would have received in your normal distributions is gone. So that would never be able to be recouped. I haven't looked at your exact numbers yet, but I suspect for a city the size of Jasper, the number is significant and important. It also provides for some specialized deductions, targeted deductions for senior citizens, fixed income folks, and veterans. We have not raised any objections to those elements of the bill. We think that's fine. It's in the normal course of business that the legislature will do and look to help those folks that need it around the state. The other big piece is, have you ever appealed, done an excess levy appeal here in the city of Jasper?
Yes.
Okay, so you know what that is. The clerk treasurer definitely knows what that is. That process is eliminated. It goes away in Senate Bill 1. So it would be very difficult for you to capture growth in your community, new investment, new assessed valuation. There's a new process being put in place. I'm sure you're all familiar with the referenda process that schools use. That would now apply to cities and towns in the state of Indiana. So you would be allowed a one-year bump in your levy if it passes a referenda, and then you would have to go back and do it all over again. So it's only there for one year. It's a very, very different process, one that doesn't make a lot of sense if you're looking to bump your levy amount for, you know, new police or fire, anything along those lines. It's a very difficult management process, so we'll be working on that in the second half. So that's where the bill stands today. It is out of the Senate now. Next week, the legislature takes a week off. Bills switch houses, so all the Senate bills will come over to the House, and it will be in the Ways and Means Committee. You've also probably heard a lot about House Bill 1402, perhaps. I hope you've read in our materials. That bill did not pass out of the House in the first half, but the concepts contained in the bill remain very alive. So things that are in that bill include really turning the property tax system upside down on its head and going to more of a rate-based system. I won't get into that tonight. It's pretty complex, but it would change things dramatically. And there would be winners and losers all over the state in terms of revenue increases and decreases, depending on where you fall. More importantly, I think, in the bill is something called business personal property tax. So this bill looks at eliminating the 30% depreciation floor for business personal property tax. What does that mean? If you own a business, you have a significant investment in equipment, that equipment never fully depreciates. It stops that 30% floor. You're paying property taxes on 30% of its value for the useful life of the piece of equipment. That goes away, okay? We're not here to debate whether that's good or bad, but we know that that provides a significant source of revenue back to cities and towns, so that would need to be replaced. The replacement mechanism that the House has been debating is a local income tax lit similar to what you probably have in the county today, except that you, as the city council, would have to make an affirmative vote to break away from that system and do your own lit rate within the city of Jasper. We can get into the details of that more once we get further into the process. But coupled with these deductions and these reduced revenues that we're looking at in the property tax space, without passing a new lit at the local level, it'd be very difficult, I would imagine, for you to maintain your same level of service that you have today in Jasper. Just a number, dollars and cents analysis of where things stand today. So like I said, we're at the halfway point. So we are now really encouraging cities and towns all across the state to adopt resolutions. I understand you have one prepared for tonight. Resolutions are resolutions, I think we all know that. But the importance here is that hopefully it will generate local conversation and awareness around property taxes and what they're used for locally here in the city of Jasper, help to generate some earned media of your folks here in the region to begin talking about that. And yes, we, again, we all want to pay lower taxes on our homes, but we also want to make sure that our streets are plowed, the police and fire folks show up when they need to show up, and all those good things. So thank you for taking that under consideration tonight. Would really appreciate you moving in that direction. We hope to have a couple hundred cities and towns in the next few weeks adopt these around the state, so you certainly won't be alone. And you're already behind Ferdinand Pass one just the other night, so you can't let those guys get out in front of you too far. But no, all kidding aside, happy to answer any questions, and appreciate the time and consideration.
Thanks, Matt. One of the comments that was made last week in a round, it was on a roundtable, I think it was, was that so many times we look at the cost, you know, of the tax. That's the way we look at tax. It's such a high cost, but we don't look at the value that we get in return. And so it's the value of the services that I think we're trying to highlight here and what the impact it might be on services if the reduction would take place, so.
Matt, are there any amendments being discussed on that, or?
Yeah, we have a long way to go. There'll be some intense debate in the second half of session. The bill in its current form will be heard in Ways and Means the first week of March. We'll probably wait another week or two after that. That's where all the amendments and changes will happen in the process. And so we'll probably come back to you with a different update of whatever the new version looks like. I think you all know the governor is pushing hard for property tax relief to homeowners. Legislature, depending on which legislator you talk to, is fully in favor to, you know, you have to watch out on the backside of what implications this has for local government, et cetera. So trying to educate as best we can and let folks know that you all haven't been immune from inflationary increases, whether it's salary or the cost of asphalt or cost of road salt or whatever it might be. Everything's more expensive than it was three years ago. So that's the key point.
Any other questions on?
I have one on the LIT tax, excuse me, right in there. Is that the, going to be the technical term for things we've heard as safety tax, motor vehicle registration, all that falling under that umbrella?
No, this is totally separate. It would stand on its own and would be income tax only.
From both of those other two?
Yes.
And right now, that's been the discussion, is to replace what you might lose with property tax with a local income tax.
And this is, you have an income tax in DuBois County, right?
Yes.
So the county passed that likely through whatever means they adopted it. I don't know which one you fell under back when it was adopted, but this would be completely different. It would require action of the city council to adopt, and it would just be a city of Jasper Incorporated area rate. It would not include the entire county. It'd be a different scenario. And then the county would then have to go back and adopt their own. The way it stands today, now that obviously can change.
And under that proposal, every incorporated community would have to adopt their own lit?
There's a, currently, there's a population threshold in the bill, so anybody over 3,500, which obviously you would fall into that category. So the smaller communities around, you know, English or wherever, would still be under the county rate and receive their distributions probably the same way they are today.
Can you address some of the issues with a local income tax as opposed to property tax? Like I've heard that it's not as stable, affects lower-income people more.
Yeah, there are a lot of different things. So if you're using, right now, property tax is obviously paid by property owners, right? And that's pretty self-explanatory. We've moved more towards an income tax system. Everybody's paying for those services. So there's been a lot of discussion about, you know, folks that are in apartment buildings, for instance. Would the owner of the apartment building pass along the property tax savings in exchange for the increase in the income tax? And, you know, those are all local questions. I see some of you kind of chuckling, but that would be one element. The other element, just income tax in general is complicated in Indiana, of course. It's finance. You do not get your income tax distributions until about 18 months after they're collected from the consumer or from the worker, in this case. So that requires a lot different financial planning, modeling. You'll probably have to bring in additional experts to help in that process. And it is, like you mentioned, very tied to the economy, so you have a lot more, it's not this smooth line that you see with property taxes, you see a lot of ups and downs with the income tax.
I think we probably all could agree that, you know, we would like to see our constituents receive some relief. What do you think the answer is?
I don't have an answer, so to speak, yet. I think we are looking at a variety of different things. There are buckets of money at the state level that you may not even know that you own. You know, every community, every county has an income tax account at the state level that's kept in reserve for trying to balance out those ups and downs that I just talked about. Perhaps there's opportunity there that is our money, your money, the city's money. But maybe there's some opportunities there, since it hasn't been realized yet, to use that to reduce the income taxes and provide some credits on property tax bills going forward, and then not necessarily dive into the deep property tax cuts we're talking about today. That's a possibility we'll be talking about with legislators as we go forward, for sure.
If you work in Jasper area, but you live outside the area, you're still in the right place?
The way it's being discussed now, this would change that model, and it would require the tax to be, to go to where you work. Oh, wait, did I get that backwards?
No, that's, I think it's backwards. Where you live.
It's where you live now, but I think it changes the new, again, nothing's set in stone, don't quote me on this, but I'm pretty sure it changes it to where you work. I could be wrong about that. Don't take me for granted on that, or don't take me for sure on that one. I need to go back and look at the bill, and it'll change again. So I wouldn't worry too much about that right now. Current income tax is collected where you live, obviously, so.
Because of the many changes, I mean, this is an everyday-changing mechanism that's going on at the state level. Wouldn't we be better off just contacting our own state legislators and having some serious discussions with them directly, expressing concerns either individually or as a group and, or maybe even meeting with them? I mean, they're off and through the chamber, like I mentioned earlier, we have some legislative breakfast-type things going on. I think that a one-on-one direct would have much more impact than it would passing some kind of a resolution. It's just my feelings on that.
Yeah, I think I would, in an ideal world, I'd like to see both happen. The direct communication is always best. You know, like I mentioned earlier, the intent behind the resolutions, we used this strategy a few years back when business personal property was being discussed, and the interest it generated in the public and the local news media really helped the effort in terms of educating legislators on how and why property taxes are necessary and where they go. So that's, it's a part of the campaign or part of the process. Always direct communication is best.
And there is no silver bullet. So lit isn't the silver bullet. Public safety tax isn't the silver bullet.
I mean, nobody wants.
Vehicle excise tax is not the silver bullet.
There's no silver bullet.
I would like to know more about those pots of money sitting up at the state that we could access that maybe we don't even know about.
It's your money, and it comes to you eventually, but we were just, we would expedite it and lower the threshold, ask that they lower the threshold that's retained back in the reserve account.
Obviously, another issue with lit tax.
Yeah.
This legislation will affect your Jasper schools and affect DuBois County and the city.
Library, township.
Sure, yeah.
The thing that worries people the most is all the uncertainty, all the changing pieces, and how's it going to fit, and how are we going to take care of the people in our community, our schools?
I was with the city a couple nights ago, and they, on the spot, passed a spending freeze. Not suggesting that for you all, but you're right. There's a lot of uncertainty and a lot of fear about what's next and what you can obligate yourself to, for sure.
Yeah, I printed off a couple of articles, too, and it does go into say that many communities are looking at hiring freeze, spending freezes, just because, you know, we don't know what the future holds.
Yep.
So maybe when we're looking at the budget this year, we ought to be looking also, as the mayor suggested last year, a flat line, but that didn't happen. But maybe we have to look a little bit closer at that this.
Well, we'll know by the time budget season rolls around where the legislation stands. We'll be able to get you updated by then, but, you know, you're right. See, I couldn't agree more.
How soon will you have, will we have an idea of what's happening?
Well, the session ends on late April, in late April, and I suspect that this bill or this idea, concept, and the budget bill will be the last two things decided. So somewhere around midnight of the last night in the General Assembly.
In the current shortfall projection, the latest that you had put out was how much for Jasper?
I had, I think it was for income tax, our property tax revenue alone was up to $730,000 on, over the next three years.
Total or per year?
And it was $277 for 2026, $546 for 2027.
So that's a key millipede number.
It is key millipede.
And that's just civil city, that's not even our TIP.
And then there, the Legislative Service Administration had a, our agency had a loss on our TIP as well, but I couldn't quite figure out how they calculated that, because it only had one TIP, and we have several TIPS. But it had a loss of $45,000. Um, but it had a loss of forty-five thousand dollars in twenty-six, eighty-two thousand.
So that is the updated, would you get that off the listserv?
Um, I got it from Baker Tilly.
Yeah, okay. So I just want to make sure it's the updated.
It's the newest one.
That's cool, yeah, perfect.
But nothing's been.
No, no, we're still a couple of months away from that.
The first is property tax, the two hundred and seventy-seven thousand for twenty-six. And that doesn't include the business property tax at all.
You know, the, the philosophy, I can't argue with the philosophy on the property tax and then, um, putting more responsibility at the local level for decision-making on what we want to invest in, you know? But that means the local income tax, it means the public safety tax, it means the motor vehicle excise tax. Those, those become real tools for us that we don't utilize today. And, you know, we'd have to become very familiar with them. It's just a big change and, and getting through this change, we'll get through it one way or another. We have to get through it. But it's, there's so many moving parts right now. It's so dynamic, it's, it's really hard to tell where we'll land. But if we don't lobby for what we do as a municipality in services to our public, there's some services we may not be able to provide.
And I think it's important.
Years ago, Huntingburg got rid of, uh, their trash collection.
Yep.
Because they couldn't afford it anymore. Well, that didn't make it any cheaper for the residents. They, they had to go out and contract it out.
You're not going to stop providing police and fire. That's been a big.
Right.
Complaint back to us that we're, you know, cities are saying they're going to not have police and fire departments. Of course you're going to have police and fire, it's a core service. But will you have fully staffed trucks? Will you be able to, you know, backfill positions that, that term out or whatever the case may be? Those are the kinds of things. Are you mowing your parks every three weeks instead of every week and a half going forward? What impact does that have? Those are the kinds of things that I think legislators really need to hear, uh, from you all, the, the real world cuts that might be coming and how it impacts, you know, everyday life.
And I think in some scenarios I've seen, depending on the value of your home and if you're at your, um, property tax cap or not, you could essentially end up paying more. And then if you shift the burden to an income tax, you're going to pay even more. So you're not actually saving your constituents' money.
Yeah, I've, I've urged our members to be careful, you're right, with that line of lobbying because legislators might say, whoa, whoa, hold on, we'll go back and fix that. Um, but yes, you're right. It, it, it's going to vary wildly between community and what your individual tax makeup is. Uh, how many of your properties are at the cap? What class of properties are at the cap? Is it all your two percent properties? Is it all your three percent properties? All your homeowners, whatever it might be? And it's just going to vary wildly. Until we have a final bill, you'll not know the real impact until you do a parcel-by-parcel analysis. So it's intense.
I have a question on the lit. If, uh, if something would go through like that and we're already getting a portion of the counties lit, but we would be expected to pass our own or suggested, would we also continue to get a portion of the county lit?
No.
So that part would go away?
Yep.
What about the motor vehicle tax?
That's.
That's different.
Independent.
So we would, if we pass the motor.
Wait, what do you mean motor vehicle, wheel tax?
The wheel tax, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, um, yes, but that is still in flux. As, and a matter of fact, on the way down here today, the, the coupling of the wheel tax to the community crossings grant was changed. Um, they still want you to pass it, but you would still be eligible to apply for part of the community crossings if you don't have a wheel tax. At least that's the, what happened today.
If the county has a wheel tax, we would still need to implement.
Yes.
Municipal wheel tax to.
Get the full amount.
Full amount of any crossing.
That was going to be my next follow-up question on that. I thought I was crazy when I read that somewhere in, maybe in the Capital Chronicle or, uh, something that they were going to tie community crossings back to a local motor vehicle.
You're not crazy. They definitely, that was in, in the bill until today and now it's still in the bill, but changed a little bit. I haven't, it may have changed more since I got out of the car. I was listening on the way down.
But we all know we, we utilize heavily on that community crossings grants. It's a great program and it's, we've certainly.
First checks I ever saw given out were in this very room.
Yeah, we've, we've tried to leverage it over the years. It's, it's a good, good for us.
How does this compare to what other states do?
Great question. So, uh, the Tax Foundation, which the legislature often refers to as for rankings of tax status around the country. Uh, Indiana is ranked fifth for the best property tax environment in the country. So we're only four states ahead of us. Um, when I talk to my colleagues.
That's our current.
That's our current system.
Okay.
Um, when I talk to my colleagues around the country and explain the cap system that we already have in place, it's the most aggressive cap on residential property probably in the country already. Um, you know, what has happened the last few years is, I think, most fiscal people would tell you is an anomaly. Uh, you saw this accelerated inflation, accelerated increase in home values. So the values go up, that gives you more room under the cap. Even if your rate stays the same or goes down, you're still probably collecting more property tax revenue than you were the year before or the year before that. And folks are seeing an increase in their property tax bill. So that's, that's where it happened. I don't think the system contemplated double-digit, you know, inflationary increases in home values, which we all like as homeowners probably, but provides a challenge when you're, when you're paying the, paying the bill.
But can you sell your house for that amount of money? That's the question.
Most people probably wouldn't sell their house even today for what it's assessed at, would be my guess.
Well, and again, for the level of services that are provided here, if you actually sit down and have a frank, honest conversation with people that are not from our area, not from Jasper, DuBois County on there, even though we think our tax rates are high, they are not.
The years I've been doing this, I've always been amazed at the ability of municipal officials, council mayors, clerk treasurers, whoever it might be, to, there's an increase in fees to be able to explain it. It, it's rarely caused a major problem locally. I think you all have that ability to really do a good job of that. So I know it's not easy, but something that typically works out okay.
But I think that was probably people's biggest concern over the past couple of years was when those property tax bills came in, it was like, wow, that's, it, they really went up.
It's also the only tax we write a check for twice a year, if you don't have it rolled into your mortgage. Um, and so it's more noticeable. It gets a lot more attention from that respect.
It went up this last year more than any other year since I've been paying my taxes and, and I received.
Me too.
I'm sure everybody received a lot of feedback, uh, at the amount of increase.
Yep.
We're with you.
But different communities are different, some different that I travel to.
Yeah.
And I think that's part of the issue, there's a good consistency in assessments in general, which that's another issue.
And it's, you also have to remember, it's not just the city. It's all the other governmental units in the county too that play into the, the overall rate, right? So did your school do a new construction? Is there some capital investment that happened? You know, did the township fire department have new trucks or what? You know, it could have been a teen million things. Uh, so that's, that's a part of it too. Right.
Such a complicated, so many different tentacles.
Stay tuned, we'll be in touch.
Gentlemen, we appreciate you taking the time. Thank you very much for making the trip down here.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for what you do. So the agenda this evening, we have resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash one, which is a resolution opposing Indiana Senate Bill One and other legislation impacting local government finances and public services. We heard this case from, from Clint and from Matt, you know, on, on why they're asking cities and towns to support this. Open it up to city councils to what direction you'd like to take on this. One, you can pass the resolution, uh, tonight, or two, you could table it and for further discussion and bring it back at another time, so.
Or it could not be passed at all, is another.
Or it could not be passed at all. Yeah, we could vote it down completely.
Mayor, I think with the uncertainty that we have, um, I don't know if we have enough information to, to.
Yeah.
To move forward with this at this time.
It definitely is changing in the state legislature almost on a daily basis. I, I would recommend we all reach out to our state legislators and really let them know these numbers. I mean, if you, Kirsten has them, I have an article that has those same numbers in them. Um, it, it could be very devastating to our community and many others, there's no doubt. But we don't know how it's going to pan out at the end of the day.
It is really important that we communicate to our representatives, senators, about the im, impacts that would be here in Jasper. We haven't defined what our impact would be necessarily other than the financial. You know, we haven't decided where it's going to come from yet. What kind of services?
There has to be a loss in services somewhere.
There has to be.
You can't, you can't reduce your, your budget and then say we're going to promise everybody the same thing.
Unless, unless you make it up through these other three tools that we talked about.
But those are going to be moving and who, who knows what that's going to.
And there will be a negative impact on those, on those individuals.
Right.
No matter what, you know, I think it's, it's, it's stirring the pot quite a bit, the mix of where, where the funding for municipalities is coming from.
Yeah, I can't imagine that the county would be very happy with it either if we have to break away from the county's funds and from the local option, local option income tax into our own LIT. That's going to be a large chunk coming down of their budget as well. Even if we replace it back with exactly what we have today or have to increase it a hair to, to make up for some of those shortfalls.
Paul, how would that take out of the county's budget if we passed our own?
If he passes, if they pass the law in there, what we have to do with the LIT taxes. You just heard him say that we would opt out of the county option of the tax.
It'd be like throwing a tip onto our income tax.
Exactly.
That's what it would be like.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's a pretty decent-sized number. My memory had a bunch of meetings to replace.
Probably when they said, uh, uh, instead of where you live, where you were, we'd be crazy not to then.
Right, sure.
We'd be.
Sure, but it would really impact the county at that point.
Yeah.
Well, then it would impact all the five counties surrounding us and all the people that are driving in here and going to work here. We'd be collecting all their tax dollars and, and they'd be without.
I don't think that would ever fly.
Wow, yeah, I know.
I think though, I think that's the, that's the purpose of the resolution is to identify the fact that this is going to cause so much uncertainty. You know, I, I think what they're, what they're asking or the purpose behind passing a resolution is just that to make, allow the legislators to understand where, what our community position is with respect to that uncertainty. So that they take a really, really hard look at the, the suggested, um, reductions and what it really is going to look like to, to try to find other sources to make up those, those reductions. And that doesn't sound like the, the level of certainty that we currently have. But, you know, passing a resolution now is a lot different than passing a resolution in April. Because by April.
Sorry to suss on.
Yeah. Well, but we could wait till March to do that when things are more certain.
Mayor, could we?
March makes more sense.
Could we prepare a position letter from the city with our numbers and everything that we could then send to our, our legislature? I mean, isn't that the most formal way to do it? If we get on the phone and call people up, I don't, I don't know that that's going to.
It would open the door by doing a letter, yeah.
I know, I've sent letters to each of the, uh.
I have two.
Yeah.
I haven't heard anything.
Kirsten did as well.
There was always a formula that they followed, like a letter represents ten constituents or a hundred. A phone call represents that, twice that many or whatever. So, I mean, that, you know, gets noticed for sure. Every little, every little bit helps. You know, I'll contact them, I'll call them and write them. I think that's an important part of the process. I don't have a problem. I, I think March makes good sense, it's still ahead of the deadline there. But, um, issue I have is the whole philosophy on, on, on how we pay for things. You know, I, I start with the premise that all taxes are evil. Some are more evil than others, but a necessary evil. So to me, the worst of all, any kind of taxes is, this is a personal opinion, of course, the income tax. Because why? Well, in our nation, our economic system, the way that wealth is created, uh, for the mass, for the, for the majority of people is through earned income. The great American middle class, that's how we create wealth, is from our earned income. Well, if you're, you're taxing that, you're going to get less of wealth creation. Versus, uh, a, a tax on, uh, property is, is a tax on, on wealth that's already been created. Uh, I don't want to, it, isn't it interesting that the president is, is talking about this, this idea of having no federal income tax? And here we are, making this shift today from property to income. It's, uh, it's unfortunate that this is what we're looking at. Uh, I, I just think it's, it's awful. So, so I'll summarize. Property is, tax is second as far as the evils go, only to income tax. Because income is where you're going to create your wealth from. And, uh, we, we need more people creating wealth, that's, that's it. Uh, I, I would, I would consider voting for this in March. I, I don't know that I like to vote for it right now. There's some other language issues in here anyway that I think I would tweak if we get to that point.
So let's table it, uh, until March.
I would like that.
Do you want to propose the changes?
Oh, sure.
So that we are ready for them in March?
Sure.
The language issue?
One of the, one of the things on the very first, uh, page, it's the, the fifth whereas down, where it says, uh, the last sentence, they're making businesses the only recipient of the tax cuts. Uh, I would suggest replacing only with some kind of language there that says, that, that the idea that they would probably be the beneficiary of, uh, a disproportionate amount of the tax cuts. But I don't think language like only, so, so absolute language would be, be proper there. And then one other suggestion, uh, two more whereas's down, where it says that, and to Matt's point earlier, uh, says that the city will be forced to make significant cuts to police, fire and road maintenance services. Uh, you might change that to maybe forced to, rather than will be forced to.
We will be forced to, that's something.
Correct, oh, yeah. Well, some, some real radical might come in here and say, we're getting rid of the parks department or, or the arts department and we're going to fully fund the rest of this. I mean, that's, uh, again, absolute language, rather than will be forced, may be forced, I think would be more the direction I would take. The, the point needs to be made, absolutely. We got it, we got to pay police and fire. Um, but I don't know that it's a foregone conclusion that that's where, where the cuts will come from. Those are the only two things I saw initially.
Well, and by the time March comes, some of these other numbers and some of the other whereas's could also change.
Very true. So let's, I'll, I'll make a motion to table it with the amended language that, uh, Chad was talking about. And, and then, uh, we'll probably have to update the numbers and things like that once we learn more about the actual SB one.
Okay.
Do I have a motion from Kevin?
I'll second.
And a second from Chad. Any further discussion?
Is it possible then for Kirsten to, Renee to work on that, uh, this month and then come to the next meeting with a updated copy of what we're going to stand on it so far?
Ten days before.
Could we actually have it prior to that, just in case those other language, the letter?
I, I think we need a position letter prior to the next meeting so that we can get it gone. Uh, aim in the municipal dispatch.
We could do a position letter anytime.
Your municipal dispatches, we got from Maine two weeks ago, had everybody, every senator on Ways and Means and Senate Budgeting Committee's information on there. And I think that we need to get that position letter out to each one of us.
I would like to see it from the mayor and the council also.
I have to.
He, we talked about that, yeah, absolutely.
All signatures on it and get it out and so that they can at least understand our position.
Well, that's kind of what this resolution was doing, except it's not.
Kind of, but more, in a more personal way, I think.
Yeah.
Well, we can do that also.
Okay.
I think, I think that's the bottom line is individually, we ought to get involved and see what it takes to help support our, our future. But then collectively as a council, let's come back next month and address this resolution, either go forward with it or not.
In the meantime, in the meantime, maybe we all as individual council members could reread this resolution and make any other suggested changes. Yes, please send any of those to me.
Eleven days, what was it? Speak to Shane, speak to Daryl.
Yeah, I was just going to say that. None of this, um, stops all of you from reaching out to legislators, correct.
And Kirsten's been giving us some financial. And Kirsten's been giving us some financial information.
Yes.
As she gets it. We got, of course, a lot of the, the issues we've talked about. And you can incorporate that into the letter. If you need to look at a draft, I've got my draft that I sent. She's got hers. We, we can share those with you.
I think some of those AIM emails that I sent out too have some really good talking points, maybe even templates of some sort. So I could look at that and give it to you.
I have a motion from Kevin and a second from Chad to table until next month, resolution number 2025 dash one. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, table next month. Thank you, gentlemen, for sharing here. Next on the agenda is the Regional Wellness Center presentation. All right, um, I want to kick it off just a little bit and then I'm going to turn it over to people who really know what's going on.
You know, as, as you know, we've, uh, we've been working on our long range comprehensive plan for a number of years and executing the items that are in there, the priorities that are in there. I'm really pleased at where we are today. We've come a long way. This, this indoor sports. Sure. Don't drive.
Please, uh.
I'll just, I'll just do my opening comments anyway, okay? Just because.
Yeah.
They've got all the, the gravy.
You're good.
It's been a long time coming. We've, we've worked hard over a number of years to get to where we are today. It was one of those things in the priority list that was kicked down the road because of the expected cost. And, uh, we had a lot of priorities that we could address, you know, that were financially easier to accomplish. This is, this one is still held near and dear to the public and as we saw that as we moved forward in preparing for today. We've partnered with the YMCA. And I say partnered with the YMCA in a number of ways. One, uh, they are doing a significant amount of fundraising with the goal of $15 million toward this project. The YMCA has, will be entering into a management agreement where they will manage the facility and the programming within the facility. We will own and maintain the grounds of the facility. So if you took, took it, I think hypothetically, we said, if you took the building, you turned it upside down, you shook it. Everything that would fall out, the YMCA will take care of it. Okay? Everything that is secured as part of the infrastructure of the building is city owned and operated. So that's a good way to look at it. The partnership, uh, as we've, as we've gone down the path with, with Mike, he's got a great reputation right now in the area with Tri-County YMCA and he's, he's had a desire to come to Jasper for many years. And you all know this story, so I'm not going to get into a lot of detail. But, but I think we've worked together pretty well and specifically over the last year and a half. Where we started the fundraising and the design work, conceptual design work. And we're at a place right now where I think it's just important that the, the community knows a little bit more about this, this project. So this is meant to be an informative session. There's no decisions to be made or anything. So well, we want to share this information today and I hope you feel as excited about it as what we do when we meet with, um, potential donations, donors to the program. Almost every meeting we have, people are extremely positive about the future and what this means to the community. It means it from an economic development standpoint, recruiting talent. It means it from bringing in business for local restaurants, for events, those kinds of things. It means it for recreational facilities that people today don't have access to because the schools are, are overbooked. And, uh, we just don't have the opportunities that we had even when I was in school. When I was in school, there was always a gym that I could get into and, uh, but that's not the case anymore in Jasper. So, and DuBois County. It's, it's, it's really a problem within the county as much with the exception of the Ferdinand Tri-County YMCA, okay? That is, that is where people have to go and they do, they do that on a regular basis. But I'm going to let Mike talk a little bit about program and then we'll, we'll turn it over to Jeff Justice and some of the others, Renee and, and Kirsten. Talk about the financial timelines. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to share a quick story. So I got a kick out of it today. A bunch of kids were at the Y today shooting baskets. I walked in and there was a Chromebook open on the floor and I'm like, guys, what are you doing here? And the kid goes, I'm finishing my e-learning. Have to have it in by three o'clock. So as Mayor said, you know, people seek out facilities where they can come and gather. So our project vision, expand access to physical and mental health and wellness. So I really want to emphasize the physical and mental health part of it, you know, two of the best ways to improve your mental health, exercise and being around others. So I think we're a great fit there. Create new program opportunities for families, seniors and youth. So our, you know, our youngest that we have come into the Y is six weeks old in child watch, up until we have a 97-year-old that comes in and uses the pool a couple of times a week. So kind of that full range of, of service, uh, people that we do. As Mayor said, strengthen regional economic growth by attracting and retaining workforce talent. My eyes have really been open in the last year of the number of people that work from home, work remotely. Mayor and I have talked of like Crane expanding thousands of jobs. Sure be nice if those people live here in DuBois County somewhere and, and worked at Crane. So provide opportunities for that. And also bringing young families back. You know, I have 27-year-old living in Denver. I sure like for him to come back someday, uh, to some of the amenities that, uh, we may not offer. Mayor talked a lot about our partnership and what that's going to look like. Also want to emphasize that we are exploring other partner requests. We want the facility at its most basic level to be used by the community. So when you see the plans, you'll see some community rooms and you'll see a gym kind of sectioned off away from everything. The purpose of that is for organizations to come in and do, um, blood drives for young life to come in on Monday nights. For people to use it for maybe a voting center, uh, people to come in and use it for family gatherings or whatever. We want that to be a vibrant, active facility. So, um, you know, the programming, as I mentioned, again, it's going to be for, for kids all the way up to adults. We do Live Strong program for cancer survivors, Rocksteady Boxing for Parkinson's patients. The facility is going to contain an indoor track for walking. But there's not a lot of people out walking tonight. But I would guarantee that there'll be a lot of people in the Regional Wellness Center walking on a night like tonight. The Wellness Center, the gyms, the community space, uh, always bringing the community together and, and serving people of all shapes, sizes, walks of life and, uh, really focused on that family time together where they can come and do things as a family together. So with that, I think I'll turn it over to you, Jeff and John maybe. Jeff for sure.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Jeff Justice. I'm an architect with Hafer and I'm here representing the design and construction team this evening. Behind me, Brad Ecklerly, um, involved in the civil and permitting process of, of the project. And you'll hear from him on a parallel, uh, situation just in a few minutes. And then also with us is the CRIMP team tonight and I promised John that I would do the presentation if he would answer all the questions. So please ask a lot of questions this evening. Just as we get started, um, to support the vision, to support the partnership that was just described, also what is envisioned is a new facility. A new facility that would stimulate all the activities that was just described. First image that you see up here on the, on the slot, on, behind you and in your packet is a kind of an overall site aerial view of where the project is located. To get you oriented to the north is to the, to the right of the page. And Jasper High School is to the top to the west, the parklands to the bottom to the east. And 15th Street is running vertical on that, uh, on the south side of, of the site. It's about 10 acres there that is adjacent to the existing parklands and school. It's the intent that the Regional Wellness Center that you see there in kind of a yellowish brown nestle itself into the western side of that property and form an anchor, uh, for the parklands and the development of it to certainly enhance and complement the parklands that are there. Also, we have an opportunity as we continue to collaborate with the school corporation for some possible, uh, connections there. It's envisioned that there are two, uh, entrances to this facility. The one on the east is a rework of the existing entrance to, that will serve both the parklands and the Regional Wellness Center. The entrance on the west is certainly needed from the size of this facility and also provides secondary access and, and possibly a more direct connection to the high school, uh, in that shared situation. The, the building entrance itself is that little red arrow that you can see there. You can see that that entrance, uh, will be visible at, at the main entrance drive as, as you come in. Uh, and ultimately will be where the front door of this facility is located. You'll be able to see that, uh, certainly from the, the Jasper Parklands Pavilion as you're there at the existing lake. And so we believe there is a, a good relationship between this project and the parklands itself. This is the first floor plan for the facility. Mike already described a, a couple of the, uh, the components of this, but I'll give you some highlights. That same red arrow exists in the bottom left-hand corner, which is the main entrance to the facility. That gets you to a location that will and can access the wellness, wellness area in an after hours situation. So we can extend the time in which the community has access to, uh, to physical fitness. If you go to the left from that main entrance, you enter a, a two-story lobby space that has some administration associated with it, whether it's check-in or membership type activities and so forth. And then, as Mike mentioned, uh, the, the child watch that they currently have would be also incorporated into this new facility. The upper left is the space that Mike talked about, uh, dedicated for the community. You can see some intergenerational spaces. That simply means that that's the space where the kids hang out. That's where the teens go. That's where the fun happens. That's where, um, they have the social time, games, computers, all of those types of things. The community multipurpose room is a space that is basically programmed, uh, for all kinds of either camp spaces or after-school spaces, those types of activities. There is a teaching kitchen, a community kitchen that is focused on nutrition and, uh, basically how do we help our community understand cooking techniques that are, uh, I guess, better? I'm struggling with this, but you get my idea.
Not everything is deep fried?
Yeah, there you go. There you go. And also that space can be used for concession type activity if the facility needs it. And it will certainly be used by the staff for lounge type spaces, you know, when it's not, not in program use. You see the large four gyms spaces that Mike referenced. The one on the left is the one that is separated acoustically from the other three gyms and has the opportunity for some more flexible programming in it. The other three gyms are all combined into one volume and has all the activities that you can imagine in there, whether it's basketball, volleyball, pickleball, and in addition to that, possibly some other, uh, court type spaces that we're still exploring. We're very early in, in that final design process. The, the blue area itself is aquatics. There's lockers, uh, and a compact pool, but it's a, it's a mighty pool because it has multiple types of spaces and, and activities, whether it's from toddlers and zero-depth entries. Swimming lesson area, you can see indication of basketball. There is places for water aerobics there and there's multiple places to give lessons for individuals who are at different levels of learning to swim. And as you can see, there are four lap swimming lanes for, uh, that type of activity. So back to the wellness, that's about 7,000 square feet of wellness equipment and, and programming in, in that green area. Go to the second floor. You can begin to see at the top of the stair, there's elevator landing area and enlarged common, common area corridor. That spine upstairs separates the elevated track area. And we're still looking at the, the length of that track, uh, whether we ultimately put the track around all four gymnasiums and have some acoustic separation or whether it looks at maybe just the three or maybe if the cost allows, we can, uh, uh, put in that intersection there to allow that track to be used even when it's, uh, um, divided from, from the auxiliary gym. Just for your knowledge of the, the track goes around all four gyms. It's about seven laps for a mile. If it goes into three, it's about nine laps for, for a mile. The last slide I'd like to show you is just the, the image of, of where we are now. Ultimately, it is our goal and hopefully you can see that we're very cognizant of the pavilion and the type of character that exists in the parklands and this building is intended, as I said, to, to relate to that and anchor the west side of the parklands. You can see the main entrance there. The one-story space at the far left is where the community spaces are. The two-story lobby space is there in the middle, just to the left of the, of the main entrance. And you can see to the right of the main entrance, there's that two-story space. The wellness area is on the first floor and the studios are on the upper level. And then around the corner to the right is where the aquatic center projects toward, toward the parklands. We're currently looking at, uh, some masonry, some metal panels and, uh, some glazing systems to make up the exterior of the facility. But thankful to have CRIMP Construction as part of this so that the design and the construction and the maintainability, the sustainability, all of those types of things can be melted together as the design evolves rather than, uh, pricing or designing the building, pricing the building, designing the building, pricing the building as we try to, but we're doing that all together at the same time. And, uh, it's a great partnership that, that I think the entire design team and construction team is enjoying. That's quickly where we are from a design standpoint. And hopefully it gives you an overview of, of what we've been working on.
Yep, good to see you.
I came to work here in October of 2022 and I think, um, the first day that I met with the mayor, he said, how do you feel about a regional wellness center? We need a regional wellness center. So ever since then, I have been, um, watching him and Renee work together with Jeff and, um, develop some preliminary, uh, designs and settle on, um, develop some preliminary designs and settle on a price tag not to, not to exceed $45 million. Simultaneously during that time, we were working to put some steps in place to secure some funding. We lobbied for a food and beverage tax that was 1% and began collecting money in that fund in 2024. Additionally, Josh worked really hard to help secure the Ready 2.0 grant of $5 million. And Mayor and Mike and the YMCA team have been out there securing, well, so far, $13.1 million in donation funds, so with a goal of reaching 15 or hopefully even more than that. We took those funds and put them into a plan. We worked with Baker-Tilly. They helped us develop a roadmap of using that money and, and reaching the 45, up to not to exceed $45 million goal. So as it stands today, we will use $5.8 million in initial cash contributions, which includes funds that we have identified at the city, our existing food and beverage tax, some edit funds, county contribution. We will use the Ready Grant then to make a $10 million cash contribution. We'll look at using bond anticipation notes to help bridge the gap between when we have the YMCA donations in place to, to when we actually finish the bonding process, and then the city will, will look at issuing bonds at that point. We have identified using the food and beverage tax, edit funds, and central TIF funds as a means to make the payment then on our bonds once the, all the financing is complete.
Kirsten, could you repeat what makes up the initial cash contribution?
And there's 2.58 million of edit funds, and there is a $500,000, I believe, cash contribution from the county. There's the existing food and beverage tax, and then I believe there is a, a TIF contribution as well from the central TIF. I can say to date, we finally got a full year worth of collection from the food and beverage tax, and we ended our first year with $577,000. And Baker-Tilly had, had used in their roadmap to make the payments, a $495,000 estimated yearly, yearly accrual of that money.
And we started off slow and picked up steam.
Yeah, we did.
So 2025 should be a very good year.
I think so.
We also had conversations during this that, again, the anticipation was to use $495,000 from that food and beverage tax. Anything we collect over and above that, we could potentially apply towards that, reducing our edit fund numbers and keep that through. Again, with, with the current status of SB1 and those, these numbers are all fluid at this point yet, but.
And, and to that point, you are right. These numbers are fluid, and we will continue to look at them. And I have been working closely with Matt and Kyle about how SB1 will affect our budget and how we will, how it could affect our ability to bond or what have you. And they feel confident, and as Matt mentioned earlier, Greller, that we should have some idea early April of how that will affect us. And then Baker-Tilly will revise our plan and make sure that it is something that we can still go forward with.
Thank you.
Okay, I get to do the lease fund slides. They're not very exciting. Kirsten said that she started working on this at, in 2022 when she came on board, and I thought, wow, we've been working on this a lot longer than that. I think we started working on this back maybe in 2018, started. And, and I have to give credit to Hafner. They've been with us every step of the way. It couldn't be where we are without them. But, so this is just a, a really kind of condensed timeline of things that we've done and, and where we're going. But I thought it was important because we've done quite a few of these items, but the real kind of putting the rubber to the road is going to start occurring here in March of 2025. And that is when we are going to begin having formal meeting, formal approval processes to go forward with the bonds and the bond anticipation notes. So we've completed, I, I jumped ahead of myself, but back several years ago, we passed the BOT statute. We approved the use of that. And, and that, we just can't underestimate the importance of that because that has allowed us to put together this fabulous design team with Hafner and Krimp. And we believe very strongly that with that team put together and being able to work through this design process together, we are definitely going to have a better project for the least amount of money that we can. That it's going to be the most efficient way to design this project. So that was a very important step. After that, we've done quite a few things. Again, we've, we, we did go out for offers for design developers, and that's, as you well know, we settled on negotiations with Krimp, and we are in that process. You see, we're underway in the scoping period and working very closely, again, with Krimp to reach a guaranteed maximum price so that we know exactly what the cost of the project will be before we ever start the project. So now we are in the Phase One, March, the kind of January through March, we're in the design development and cost budgeting. We did just get our first cost estimates from Krimp, and we are within the project budget under our not-to-exceed amount, so we're very happy where that is. We're beginning Phase One, which is the BOT, the kind of preliminary BOT agreement. That will come sometime in March or April, and that will be with respect to the site work. Phase One is simply about getting the site ready for construction. Once, and, and hopefully we can get that underway in April, but if not, the, the final or the deadline for us internally is the middle of May to get that Phase One underway. Then if you want to go to the next slide. So these are kind of the formal steps that we have coming up. As I said, we're going to start in March with the Redevelopment Commission. This is all statutorily required process for approval of bonds. And so we'll go to the Redevelopment Commission where they will hold a public hearing on, it says, on the lease and lease rentals. Again, this process is going to be very similar to what we followed in the Cultural Center as well as the outdoor swimming pool. We are going through a bonding process, but on paper, it's called a lease, and we go through that leasing process. So it goes to the Redevelopment Commission first, and then you can see the same month, it will go to the Redevelopment Authority. And then finally, it will come to the City Council in the March 18th meeting for approval of that lease agreement. Then we will go through April and finally have closing on the bond, the bands on May 15th. But I do want to point out that in order to close on the bands, which are those bond anticipation notes that Kirsten spoke of, that process involves approval of the bonds as well. So when you see the documents, you're going to see the numbers that reflect the total, the maximum not-to-exceed amount. That doesn't mean we're approving that amount, but we all know that there has to be a maximum not-to-exceed in those documents. So don't be alarmed when you see those numbers. That's the same that we did for the outdoor swimming pool and what we did for the Cultural Center. And then.
Renee, in Kirsten's presentation, there wasn't any, no figures, no dollar amounts under the bonds. Do we know what the anticipated bond anticipation number could be, or when will we know that?
I think we had identified on the bond anticipation note, the 15 million, which represents the donor funds.
The bond anticipation notes are only for approximately 11 million. And then I think we're looking around 29 million for, I'm sorry, it's 18 million for the, for the bonds. The $10 million is the cash contribution for the total of the 29. So we're currently looking at 18 million dollar bond. Again, that, that number may fluctuate a little bit depending on capital interest, depending on how much the YMCA actually ra, YMCA actually raises and so forth. So we have about a $10 million cash contribution, $11 million bond in bond anticipation notes and 18 million dollars in bonds and signs.
What page was that? Excuse me. So we will, we will include the maximum not-to-exceed numbers in these initial, these initial resolutions and documents that you'll see in the March meetings. And then are there any other questions?
Yes. All the, the modeling for financing has been, to this point, based upon a set of rules that everybody understood, and now with everything in flux, potentially, perhaps a whole new tax regimen coming in, and our anticipated revenue loss as a result. This timeline seems a little aggressive with that as a backdrop. So we're going to be voting as if nothing's changed come March. We're going to vote to proceed that currently that's the design laid out for us. So yes?
You will be voting on those numbers. You are correct. But at the end of the day, we won't be going anywhere without approving the agreements with the contractor. So we will definitely, we will not be moving forward with that part of the project until we know more, and you'll see that that is at the end of April. But we do need to have those approvals in place in order to go forward with the contract with the contractor, so.
So in March, if we vote to approve, we can continue our process, but we've not yet obligated ourselves to that dollar amount.
Exactly.
Okay.
Any other questions? And then once, let's just assume that everything goes forward at that time during the summer. This summer, we'll be working on Phase Two, which is the final construction documents for the building itself. And the, at the end of the summer, the goal is to have that guaranteed maximum price on the project to enter the agreement with the, the developer and to close on the bonds for the, the project in general. And then in September to commence construction.
And the bond rate is September 18th, right? Is that, is that the rate on that day? Is that when? Or you've been rate before?
Yeah, we'll have a call before then. Okay. In advance, but not far in advance.
Well, here's another hypothetical then. Let's pretend the state doesn't get, get this figured out to our satisfaction, and we're left to figuring out new means to raise our revenues. Is there, within our option, do we have, I mean, we've talked about it in the past, the possibility of phased approaches, you know? Is, is that in the working group? Has, have we looked at those kind of designs yet?
On the phasing side, isn't it? Yeah, the contingency plans. I mean, there's been absolutely chat about contingencies on there. Phasing it, I don't know that we really got into. We, we have seen several different design phases on these. The first one we said immediately when we got in there was, we need to scale this back. We need to cut it down and see what we can do on the facility. And we went back to the drawing board from what we had originally, and we jumped from 91 to 97,000 square feet. That's, we started cutting the project down, we actually increased by 8,000 square feet of the facility, and then had to, had to rein it back in with some tweaks on the pool design, that portion of it, some of the wellness changes.
I, I don't know, this, this is kind of a backwards way of answering what I think is your concern. I, I don't know that we've actually got a plan in place that would involve us phasing the construction. I, I don't think that's, with the current footprint, that's not something that we would have to, I think, rethink things. But what we did do from a funding perspective is ensure that we are not using the sum total or even close to the total of all those buckets of funds that you saw in Kirsten's slide. So we are using edit funds, but we are not using anywhere close to all of the edit funds that are available in any given year. In fact, once the, the bond payments are completed for the Cultural Center, those are the funds that are going to be used for this project. And similarly with the TIF funds, we aren't using near all of those funds, and once the swimming pool bonds are paid off, then we will be using the swimming pool bond payment funds to go toward this project. So we expect for those funds, the, the central area TIF fund and the edit funds to continue to accumulate while this is being paid. And we felt pretty comfortable with that. And I don't know, I think all of you know Baker-Tilly, they're, they take a pretty conservative approach to any kind of project that they've ever helped us with. And so they've given us their advice on, on what we can use and what we can afford from those buckets of money.
By the way, a quick shout-out to Baker-Tilly was as well, through all this uncertainty through SB1, we reached out last Thursday evening to Matt and Kyle and asked them, hey, we need, you know, we need some answers. We've got to get this quick as we can on this. And they came back with, we're actually using your pro, this project as kind of our, our model for the state right now. We know this project's important to you guys. We know you're close to completion or getting these numbers to completion, but that was going to be the example that they're handing out to other communities right now in there is how, how it works out, so.
And, and just to backtrack on what Renee said about using, not using all of our edit funds, even with this payment in place and the contribution of edit funds towards the Regional Wellness Center, the mayor still has a, a five-year plan of using edit funds, and it, those include contributions to public safety, fire department, police department, road construction, storm sewer, sidewalk development, those things.
Doesn't cut in Danny into our plan.
Doesn't cut it out. I'm sure it cuts into, but I'm sure it's not cutting it out.
Well, and the other thing that I researched, and I think, I believe I have the answer, food and beverage tax. So as you heard, we exceeded the expectations that we included in our, in our funding roadmap. And so our, our, the Indiana code that sets up that food and beverage tax for us or allows us to impose that food and beverage tax allows us to use those funds for operation and maintenance of that building. So we believe that we can take that excess and put that into a reserve account so that that's building up and is available for us to use for operation and maintenance in the future, should that be needed.
So it could work either way, really. It could work on lowering this amount that we're paying out, or it could load, or it could build up a fund for maintenance.
It could apply directly to the bond principal as well.
It could be also. Yeah. And then after this project would be paid for, we would still be collecting the food and beverage tax, which then could be put toward, or is that sunset after this?
22 years.
In 2045.
22 years.
That is.
Realistically, it could be reenacted to support this project as a maintenance fee.
Well, I don't know what things will be like in 2045, but at this point in time, the way it's been working is that it's been identified for a project, and that's how ours is as well. But for that project, pretty much anything related to it.
Well, I think we can only build what we can afford, so if we have to cut something, we may have to cut something, whether it's in the design or something. It, that still may have to happen.
It may. You're correct.
I mean, it's the million-dollar question yet, so it could happen.
Multi-billion dollars.
Well, because originally, really, we were told that it probably would come nowhere near 45 million. Now it's 44,121,595, so that's pretty close.
Yeah, and I do want to say, again, not unlike Baker-Tilly, that number is pretty conservative. So in that, we've built in a lot into that number. So we have construction contingency and owner's contingency. So we have construction contingency and owner's contingency. Every, everything that we've spent to date, plus everything that we contemplate could be spent in the future, is included in that number. So we do definitely expect that number.
That includes the money that happens to pay, which is approximately $400,000, or includes that $800,000 contract, design contract that we have to give at the end of the year.
Purchase price.
Oh, that's already included in this number. The part, the number that I like is a soft cost, because normally in a project, soft costs are not included. And then all of a sudden, you have to furnish the building and whatever. And so those are included in here.
Including all of our professional service fees, everything.
The goal is 100% transparency. We don't want any surprises. We don't want anything coming back. We don't want anybody coming in and saying, oh, where was this at? You slid this in with 11,000. That's, that's-
There's no sliding.
I was going to say, this has been tremendous goal for-
I like the, you know, conservative approach, the estimates. That's the way to be, so you weather the storm a little better whenever things change. But when they, when they, when they change drastically, that's, that's a whole other story. Like, so just a case in point with Baker Tilly used the 4%, I'm going to miss, I'm going to mislabel the term, but the, the maximum levy increase-
Growth quotient.
There you go, the growth quotient. Thank you. Was 4%. And they used that for the North Ridge TIF model. And now we're hearing about a 0% and then a 1 and a 2. And that's, that's radical, radically different than the current standard. So we've got to be prepared for that kind of stuff, too. And then if, if indeed it impedes our ability, the TIF revenue to, to pay off the current pool, is that something I understood was a possibility?
If, if our, if our tips are affected by property tax, we don't generate the amount of money, that'd be a head held sort of projected. But it doesn't appear to go down that low.
Right. Keep in mind that every time we bond, we have to have a coverage, an excess coverage built in to take into account those kinds of unforeseen circumstances. And that coverage number is like 25 to 40, anywhere from 25 to 40% at times. So it, it's a pretty healthy coverage amount.
And the one thing I never want to lose track of, lose sight of, is, is the fact that we're talking about being property tax backed. It's like having a cosigner that potentially may be called upon someday to pay that bill. So that's pretty important when we start looking at radical rule changes here. So those are the things in the back of my mind, but I'll proceed with-
Don't worry, those things are in mind with us as well.
It's in the forefront of ours. Yeah.
And we do have to meet those standards that Baker Tilly had talked about in the presentation, those tests.
Reasonable expectation tests.
Expectation tests. So we wouldn't even be able to bond if we didn't meet those tests.
Kirsten, do you have any idea of like its costs and stuff like that? What kind of money we're going to generate?
We are still working on, on, between the YMCA and the city, what is responsible for what are you asking?
No, more of a version of course. We don't cover.
So kind of the mayor had talked about that before, like if you take the building and shake it, so whatever is part of the building would be the city's and the other amenities that would fall out.
No questions?
We are looking at-
Air conditioners, pool pumps, that kind of stuff. That's, that falls upon us in there. But the day-to-day pool chemical offers, that, that becomes their responsibility to make sure that it's, that it's in there and taken care of.
And then we'll have a lot of insurance.
Insurance, that's right.
I know that Tom has planned for, you know, outside the monthly-
Yeah, if, if that part, so we're concerned about that. The other thing, in a sense, a minor, but you mentioned a lot of the soft costs for, you know, what we have carried into like the gym equipment and everything that would be provided by the line. That's all included in the budget, right? That's in that dollar.
That's the, that's the need, and that's part of the money that the YMCA is raising.
Something that would be coming out there in part.
All right, we're getting long-winded. I'll sit down.
Mike, second.
I appreciate the, the questions and the, and, you know, the concerns, because this is a big project. And with, with things changing out there, obviously, we've got to keep our eye on where the carrot's going and how many rabbits are chasing it. Yeah, so.
I just have one other question, kind of based on what Phil says. But then who pays the utilities, the water bill and all those kind of things?
That would be the-
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that'll be in the agreement that we have, the management agreement, so. Mike, you want to wrap things up?
Well, I just want to, you know, thank the city team. It's been a long journey. Mayor kind of referenced our phases of talking and dating and ongoing. We've been together too long. But big thanks to the city team. Also, early in this process, we formed a capital development task force, which a couple members are in the room here, who have really challenged us along the way and helped keep us on track. I don't think we swerved far, far off the track. I also want to thank our donors, over $13 million pledged. It's a pretty significant number. And if you think of some of those pledges came in May of 2023, when we were looking at National Guard Armory, didn't, we had a vision, we had a, a sketch, but not much more than that. So really, a big thanks to those who have supported the project to date. I wouldn't be a good fundraiser, and I saw Kevin chuckling already, if I didn't include a pledge form on the back of my presentation. But we do have, we do have some work to do. And, you know, as Chad brought up, concerns about costs and a way that we can help mitigate that is through our fundraising efforts. We feel like each step along the way that brings the project more into focus, more into reality, is a bigger incentive for people to help be a part of that. So if you know of people who are interested and, you know, hopefully the word is out in the community and, you know, whether that's a $1,000 donor or a $500,000 donor, we love to talk to them and love to have them support this project that we think's going to be around for 100-plus years. So for our kids, grandkids and great-grandkids. So thank you, guys, for your time.
Thanks, Mike.
Mike, thanks a lot. Appreciate it. Thank you all for the presentation. Again, no action required on it, this is for information only. I think the commitment early on was we'll build what we can afford to build. And so we're continuing down that path.
Okay. Yeah.
Next thing on the agenda is ordinance number 2025-2, an ordinance to rezone certain property within jurisdictional limits of the Jasper Advisory Plan.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we read by, for first reading only, by title only.
Do we have a motion for Paul to read by title only?
I'll second.
And a second from Vince. All in favor, sitting by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Would the city attorney please read the ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number 2025-1.
Dash two.
Oh, I'm sorry. Here, sorry. Ordinance number 2025-2, an ordinance to rezone certain property within the jurisdictional limits of the Jasper Advisory Plan Commission.
Do we have a motion to approve the ordinance on the first reading?
So moved.
I have a motion from John.
I'll second.
And a second from Chad. Any further discussion on this?
This came before the plan commission last month. On there, received a unanimous favorable recommendation. This transfers the property that the regional wellness center will sit on from an R2 zone into a conservation park, which blends in with the parklands in its current zoning. So just ties that, ties that back together. We did have conversations again in the planning sessions with the Indiana Department of Natural Resources on there. We do encroach just a little bit on the property with the design. Here it is, and they gave us their blessing. They were very excited to see that project helping get more people out and about and moving around in nature as well. So that's where we stand.
Okay, I have a motion from John, a second from Chad. Any other questions, comments? All in favor, sitting by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. 5-2 has passed.
While we're moving on, I just want to let you know in case it gets confusing, rezone ordinances only sit for one reading. So if you're wondering why this is not going to come back for a second reading, it's because statutorily, they only have one reading.
Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2025-1, an ordinance establishing rules and regulations for adoption amendment and repeal of ordinances and resolutions. Could I have a motion to read the ordinance on the second reading in full or by title only?
I'll make a motion to read on the second reading by title only.
I have a motion from Nancy for title only, and a second from Phil. All in favor, sitting by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Would the city attorney please read the ordinance 2025-1 by title only?
Ordinance number 2025-1, an ordinance establishing rules and regulations for the adoption, amendment, or repeal of an ordinance, both in resolutions.
Could I have a motion to approve the ordinance on the second reading?
So moved.
Have a motion for Paul.
I'll second.
A second from Vince. None? Then all in favor, sitting by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to read ordinance 2025-1 for the third and final reading by title only.
Do we have a motion from Paul to read by title only?
I'll second.
And a second from Vince. All in favor, sitting by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The city attorney, please read ordinance number 2025-1 by title only.
Ordinance number 2025-1, an ordinance establishing rules and regulations for the adoption, amendment, or repeal of ordinances and resolutions.
Could I have a motion to approve the ordinance on the third and final reading?
I so move.
Motion from Chad.
I'll second that motion.
Second from Nancy. Any further discussion?
Just like to point out, I think Renee cited before the meeting, this could well be our last third reading ever. It's a moment, a little emotional here.
Cherished. We're eliminating waste. All right, no further discussion. All in favor, sitting by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Order number 2025-1 has passed. Next item on the agenda is orders number 2025-3. Could I have a motion to read the ordinance on the first reading in full or by title only?
I'll move. We read by title only.
I have a motion from John to read by title only.
Second.
Second by Paul. All in favor, sitting by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City attorney, please read ordinance number 2025-3 by title only.
Ordinance number 2025-3, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Jasper, Indiana, authorizing the issuance of its taxable economic development revenue bonds and approving other actions in respect thereto.
Could I have a motion to approve the ordinance on the first reading?
So moved.
Motion for Paul.
I'll second.
Second by Kevin. Any further discussion?
So this ordinance deals with the, the bonds that will be sold for the North Ridge project through the IFA RAF program.
This is backed by Kirsten's with a letter of credit.
Their letter of credit.
This was the low entrance, low interest, the low?
Correct.
Yeah.
Any other comments, questions? Okay. I have a motion from Paul and a second by Kevin. All in favor, sitting by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Order 2025-3 has passed on first reading. Does this have to go through multiple?
Second.
It will.
Yes.
And next is the gas contractor license applications.
I received two gas contractor license applications, one for Matt Pry with Bears Plumbing Inc. and one for Justin Clark with Bears Plumbing Inc. Matt passed with an 86% and Justin passed with a 90%. Any questions on either of those?
Okay, entertain a motion to approve the applications for the gas contractor's license for both Matt and Justin.
So moved.
I have a motion from John.
I'll second.
And a second from Vince. Any further discussion? All in favor, sitting by saying aye.
Aye.
And last item here is the acceptance of donations.
I would like to request that the council accept donations that were made in the month of January to the arts department totaling $155,180. There were several restricted use donations, one in the amount of $150,000 for performances and other activities as determined by the director. And then three $1,000 restricted use donations to be used towards the 50th anniversary dinner at the, of the arts department this year. The art board did agree to the conditions of those donations. So all I really need from you guys is acceptance.
I'll make a motion to acceptance of the donations.
Do we have a motion from Kevin?
I'll second.
And a second from Vince. Further discussion?
Nothing other than would like to thank the generous benefactors of the city of Jasper for their continued support, some pretty spectacular programming.
And I think it's important to note that there is a lot of things that get done in the city of Jasper through donations, through this philanthropy that we're beneficiaries of. And, you know, it's, it's great because we get things done without increasing our tax levy on, on our residents. So it's a big part of who we are here. All right, I have a motion from Kevin, a second from Vince. All in favor, sitting by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, I have no other business. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Nancy.
Second.
Second from Paul. All in favor, sitting by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.